This work session of the Ketchikan City Council. So I'd like to call to order the, this work session of the Ketchikan City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role?
Matani.
Yes.
Bradbury.
Here.
Kissler.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Gas.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Gage.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Ketchikan City Council would like to respectfully acknowledge the traditional first people of this land in Ketchikan, the Tongas-Tlinket people. We have no communications and we have no persons to be heard. So we're going to go right into new business. We're going to first have an introduction by the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau and then some presentations by some local cruise industry members. After each person speaks, there will be some time for the council to ask their questions and comments. So with that, I guess we're into the introduction by the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau. Thank you, Patty.
Good evening, council members, and thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm glad we were able to make, get this work session organized. We started discussing this back in December, I believe, during budget hearings. And it took a little bit of shuffling, but city manager was very persistent and she got us all scheduled in at the same time. I'm going to keep my comments really brief because really, the point of tonight is to provide information to the council with regard to what is actually already happening in the cruise industry in Ketchikan and giving you some information that will be helpful, I think, for you as you continue your discussion about how you're going to move forward in managing and marketing the port. So I will just have a little bit of a presentation down towards the end of the evening, but really, it's all about these folks who have taken the time to come tonight and share their experiences and I hope it's worthwhile for all of you. So with that, I will, thank you.
Thank you. Our first speaker tonight will be Renee Lemoje-Reeve, Vice President of Government and Community Relations, Cruise Lines International, Alaska.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
We can, Renee.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Vice Mayor Flora and city council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As you said, my name is Renee Lemoje-Reeve and I'm Vice President of Government and Community Relations for Cruise Lines International Association, Alaska. CLEA Alaska is part of a global network. We, in Alaska, represent 17-member cruise lines and we bring about 99% of all cruise passengers to Alaska. Our members represent ships with capacities from 175 passengers to 4,600. While Alaska only represents 5% of the global cruise market, we continue to be a very attractive destination for travelers and a bucket list trip for people around the world. And we don't have to tell you that. You see a number of them every year, getting off the ships thrilled to see what Alaska has to offer and thrilled to be in Ketchikan. Alaska cruises are still in high demand and because of that, you've seen more ships being added to the market, especially in the years prior to the pandemic. So when cruise companies first decide to deploy a ship or add more ships to a region, they determine what a viable itinerary looks like and they analyze the availability of port destinations. Lines will consider whether or not they feel that market can absorb another 40,000 to 50,000 guests, where that ship should come from or would come from, how long to get a new ship into the market, how it would impact current bookings if the extra capacity were lowered or raised pricing, and what they feel their competitors might do. Is their dock space available? Is there enough shore X capacity for guests to have fun? And a myriad of other commercial factors. A typical seven-day Alaska itinerary includes three ports and a day of glacier viewing. All three ports plus the port of embarkation have to have availability. So it's not just about one port community visiting Ketchikan or any other port. Must also fit in with a larger itinerary. And I know Rick with Claw will speak to you next about that and the complexities and what goes into the jigsaw puzzle of putting together a schedule. But there's a checklist that must be met to make the ecosystem of cruise ship itineraries work. A lot of moving parts and pieces have to be managed and there has to be collaboration among the cruise lines, communities, suppliers, ship agents, and tour operators. One of the biggest aspects of my job and my role at CLEA, and the role of CLEA Alaska, is to represent the cruise industry to the port communities we visit. But in doing so, it's not just about relaying the industry's needs to the communities, but also the community's thoughts and perspectives to the industry. We can't coexist, we have to coexist. We can't exist without each other. CLEA Alaska wants to ensure collaborative relationships in the port communities we visit and that's no different in Ketchikan. In addition to communicating with your local officials like Lacy and Brad, we're in touch with Patty at the Visitors Bureau, business leaders, tour operators, and others in Ketchikan on a regular basis and we think that that's a huge part of our job. This past year, we've, we started holding pre, well, post, and what will now be preseason meetings with the port communities in an effort to recap the season, level set, and share expectations going into the season. We were lucky enough to have that meeting with Lacy and Brad and Vice Mayor Flora in December, I believe, early December. And we'll be in Ketchikan in person in April to do that again. It's an opportunity to information share and address concerns that communities might have. We're also working with member lines right now to develop a 10-year outlook that will be shared with city manager in an effort to give Ketchikan a sense of what we anticipate the needs of the cruise industry to be in the coming years, what size ships our member lines will be bringing, how the community can be prepared. Tourism best management practices is another way for the cruise industry, businesses, citizens, and local governments to address issues brought about by the influx of cruise passengers in Alaskan communities. The success of the 25-year program in Juneau has led six other Alaskan communities, including Ketchikan, to implement similar programs to ensure communication and collaboration lead the way in our industry. At the end of the day, if you determine you want to hire a tourism manager, the best thing I'd like to leave you with is to hire someone who understands all the players and wants to work with all the different stakeholders. And hire someone who wants to work with the industry. An adversarial relationship will not benefit any of us. I liken it to hiring a police chief. We all have opinions about crime, but your police chief lives and breathes those issues. The person you should hire should know the issues, know all the different players, from independent tour operators to retailers and yes, cruise line executives because at the end of the day, a tourism director can't market Ketchikan to the world or even very effectively to cruise lines because that's not really how it works. But they can liaise between the city council and your community and the tourism industry that's vital to Ketchikan and our state. And that's what we would like to see if you move forward in that. So thank you for your time tonight and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Reeve? I have one. Is there any news out of Canada as far as where they're at for this upcoming season?
So I'll tell you, we continue those discussions. Our counterpart in Canada is very, very involved and we've seen movement. We know that Canada has been waiting a little bit to see what the CDC was going to do and we're hoping that what happened last week with the CDC and our member lines adopting the voluntary program will help to give them some more reassurance. You know, Ketchikan, Juneau, Skagway were very complimentary at the end of last season. We were able to sail to your communities safely with little to no impact on your healthcare systems. And I would anticipate that we would look to do the same this year with a very similar structure. But we're still waiting on Canada. The long and the short of it is, we're still waiting.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker, our next speaker is, oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Mr. Matani.
Thank you for being with us today. You said earlier in your presentation, cruise lines will be bringing in ships up to 4,600 passengers. Aren't there bigger ships scheduled to come called Southeast Alaska ports? And are there going to be some this year or how are we handling that?
What I was saying earlier in the presentation is that our member lines represent ships of up to 4,600 people. To be honest with you, Rick's probably the better person to be able to tell you what we have scheduled right now for your community.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Rick Erickson, Vice President, Operations, Cruise Line Agencies of Alaska.
Good evening, City Council, Vice Mayor Flora. First and foremost, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for having me to speak with you tonight. My name is Rick Erickson. I work with Cruise Line Agencies of Alaska here locally in Ketchikan and oversee all of Alaska individual ports on Cruise Lines' behalf, which includes all of Southeast as well as Anchorage and Seward, Whittier areas. Tonight, I'm here to speak to a couple of your agenda items tonight. Actually, there's four of them, one of which will be itinerary planning and how ports are linked together for in planning and development. The other one is how we work with the new and interested cruise lines wanting to come into the market. And three, how our annual dock assignments determine and who's involved in those decisions. And last but not least is what does a ship agent do? That could be a while if you want me to explain all of what a ship agent will do, but I will not do that in this case. And bear with me on this slide thing here, if you would, please. So we, in regards to itinerary planning, I think it's important to note that when we plan for voyages in Alaska, more importantly, we just, when, in scheduling ships, we're not scheduling just for Ketchikan alone. We plan region-wide through Southeast and up into Southwest Alaska, which includes Whittier and Seward. Cruise line scheduling in Alaska is based on historic priority. There are a number of things that are considered when taking historic priority into consideration in scheduling ships, not only in Ketchikan but throughout other ports throughout Southeast Alaska. One of which is the number of years the cruise line has been operating in Alaska. To that point, I can tell you that each port is different. For example, Juneau's historic priority may be different than Skagway's. Skagway's may be different than in Ketchikan's. And again, historic priority is based on the number of years each of the member lines have been calling into the state of Alaska. That's how it's determined. Another important factor is the number of years operating in a particular port. Again, each port is different. Skagway may be different than Juneau. Juneau may be different in Ketchikan. It all depends on how long an individual cruise line has been calling in that port. And then also, we get down into the traditional day of the week in which a cruise line and their vessel has been calling in a particular port. For Ketchikan, an example would be Celebrity on a Sunday having a particular ship in Ketchikan on Sunday. Historically, every Sunday, we take that into consideration comparatively to that. If someone else wanted to move in on that day, Celebrity would have priority on that typical day of the week. Typically, cruise lines submit their schedules to us two years in advance. Here now, I'm beginning to receive 24 schedules. So we're looking roughly about two years out. Once the majority of the schedules we receive from all the operators looking at wanting to operate in Alaska, we enter them into the schedule of which, at that point in time, we then begin identifying conflicts, not only in the port of Ketchikan, but other ports throughout Southeast Alaska. This slide here is, kind of shows you what we have available as it relates to berths as well as anchorages throughout Southeast. And this is, plays a major factor when we're scheduling ships in Alaska and one, in knowing how many berths and/or anchorages are available as to place ships in each of the respective ports. So as you can see, Juneau has the four berths, one anchorage. Ketchikan now having six berths and one anchorage. This has certainly given Ketchikan an opportunity, as we all know, that some berths have opened up for us based on the fact that, in speaking in general, downtown Ketchikan with the two new Ward Cove berths. And then there's a list of other ports that have the number of ships that they can accommodate each and given day. I think it's important to note here, if you were to look at Seattle and Vancouver, each of them have three berths. And that's an important key in scheduling cruise ships into Alaska because historically, Friday, Saturday, Sunday are to capacity in both Vancouver and Seattle, meaning that in the middle of the week, we find in Ketchikan, Juneau, Skagway are to capacity here. Once conflicts are identified, we then look at trying to figure out how we're going to solve those conflicts. There are a few things that we take into consideration. I've listed a few of them here. There's certainly more. But bullet point number one, in the event of a birthing request is received from one or more cruise line for a particular day of the week, priority will be given to that cruise line that has historically called that day of the week. Okay, an example of that would be, let's take Thursdays where we have two Holland America ships and two Princess ships in port that given day. If another member line, for example, RCI, looked at wanting to place a ship in Ketchikan on Thursday, certainly they could, but it would either be at Ward Cove or at Anchor. So that's an example of historically where Princess and Holland have had two ships here on Thursday, no one else would, you know, we would look at filling either the Anchorage or Ward Cove on that day. Another bullet point that's taken into consideration is birthing seniority rights for a specific day. It belongs to the cruise line, not necessarily the ship. So an example of that would be on Sundays, if we have the Solstice calling Ketchikan on Sundays and they elected to replace the Solstice with another Celebrity ship, Celebrity would still have priority on that day, on that Sunday. If more than one cruise line is requesting the same day of the week, of which neither cruise line has historically called on that day, priority would be given to the cruise line that, with historic priority. An example of that would be, for example, if you had Princess and Holland America, which typically have never, or say, for example, typically haven't called on Saturday, each of them wanted to call Ketchikan on a Saturday, priority would be given to Holland America on that day just based on the fact that historically, they've called Alaska, more importantly, Ketchikan, longer than Princess. And then the last but not least priority is given to a cruise line that calls a port on a specific day of the week on a weekly or bi-weekly basis over the vessel that would call here randomly. An example of that would be if you have a San Francisco ship sailing out of Seattle on a 10-day itinerary, they're not going to fall on the same day of the week as it would be a Vancouver and/or Seattle ship would fall on a weekly basis. So priority would be given to that vessel that has called here on a weekly basis. The next four slides are going to give you a general idea of what itineraries are offered through South, or through Alaska. The typical ones that we see, typically, we see Vancouver-Vancouver's, which are seven-day itinerary round trips. These itineraries may vary. They may call Ketchikan, Juneau, Skagway, Tracy Arm, back down to Vancouver. Or they may call first Juneau-Skagway Glacier Bay then Ketchikan. It all varies. And all this is part of the puzzle that we put together in port availability as it relates to historic priority, not only in Ketchikan, but each of the respective ports throughout Southeast. Another common itinerary that you'll see is Seattle round trips. They're again typically seven-day. However, we are now seeing more cruise lines going to six, seven, and eight-day itineraries based on the fact that that'll get them on an off day in which another port would be available. Typical itinerary here, again, would be a Ketchikan, Juneau, Skagway, ice, whether that's Glacier Bay or Tracy Arm. The important thing to note here is that obviously, as we all know, or maybe you don't know, but those ships that call Seattle that are on a closed-loop itinerary, which is Seattle, Seattle, have to call Victoria, have to call a foreign port. So typically what you'll see, although you'll see that a Seattle ship would go Juneau, Skagway, Glacier Bay, Ketchikan. The port call in Ketchikan is limited to only about a six-hour call from 6,000 to 1,300 because they need to take that, they need to call Victoria prior to getting into Seattle. Another alternative, another example of a northbound itinerary, you could do Ketchikan, Juneau, Tracy Arm same day, Skagway, day at sea, Victoria, back into Seattle. So all this goes into play as it relates to juggling the ports, not only with Ketchikan, but also Juneau, Skagway, icy strait, Sitka, whatever that may be. And last but not least, well, I shouldn't say that because there's one other after this, but you have your Vancouver to Anchorage, which is either Vancouver, Whittier, and/or Seward. And we refer to these as the open jaw itineraries. Typically, an open jaw itinerary would be Ketchikan, the first stop, Juneau, Skagway, Glacier Bay and/or Hubbard Glacier depending on whether the cruise line has permits to operate in Glacier Bay and then Seward. The important thing to note here on this itinerary, as it relates to priority in each of the individual ports, is a northbound itinerary, for example, if a ship's departing out of Vancouver on a Friday, they would call Ketchikan on Sunday. Of course, now, when they get to Seward, it'll be another Friday. These are seven-day itineraries and once they get to Seward, on their return trip, they would be in Ketchikan on Wednesday. And historically, the way these work, that that ship, that member, that line calling both northbound and southbound would have priority not only in Ketchikan on Sunday and then on their northbound, but also in Ketchikan on their southbound itinerary on a Wednesday. And this is another example of an itinerary we see and this is a, typically a 10-day out of San Francisco. And it's important to note here in that when you're on a 10-day round trip itinerary, you're not going to fall in the same port on any given day of the week. And so here, we have the flexibility of doing San Francisco, Ketchikan, Juneau, Skagway, or at times, if Ketchikan's not a viable option on the, on one particular day, they can make that run from San Francisco to Juneau. It's a two-day at sea and then the next day would be either in Ketchikan or Juneau. So we have a little bit of flexibility depending on port congestion and other ports to manipulate this itinerary to make it work. The next topic of discussion is that I think it's important to know that are any cruise lines excluded from this process? And I think it's important, here, it's important to note that obviously, there's other cruise lines that may look at wanting to come into the market. Are they excluded? Absolutely not. We, cruise line agencies, work cooperatively with many of the cruise lines, look at placing a ship into the Alaska market. We work closely with deployment and their operation teams to determine whether or not Alaska would be a viable option. Okay, this isn't only true for any new cruise line wanting to come into the Alaska market, but for the existing ones that are already here. And that means if they're looking at bringing in an additional ship, a bigger ship, a larger ship... they're looking at bringing in additional ship, a bigger ship, a larger ship, we spend a lot of time working with their port ops people, even ship development people, as it relates, some of the things that we look at, the first, the most important thing that we look at in working with them is whether or not the ship fits in Alaska. You may say, "Well, what do you mean, does it fit in Alaska?" Well, the infrastructure that we have shoreside, the facilities that that ship ties up to, we need to be able to make sure that one, the docks that we do have in place are capable of accommodating that class ship. They have ship characteristics, whether or not we have overhanging lifeboats, anything that sticks over the side of the ship that may impact the ship from not being able to call Alaska. Those are all the things that we look at. An example, a couple of examples that would be important to note is Disney Cruise Line. When they looked at coming into the Alaska market, we worked with them for five or six years before they even ended up placing a ship in Alaska. Another member line was looking at replacing an additional ship, or an existing ship in Alaska with another ship. When they showed us their plans as to whether or not they can bring that ship in the Alaska market, it was determined that they had overhanging lifeboats that wouldn't fit not only any dock in Ketchikan, but anywhere in Juno and/or Skagway, or any port within Alaska. So we were, we were able to work with their team and be able to draw their lifeboats up inside the hull of the ship so they wouldn't extend outside the ship to where, again, we could accommodate them in Alaska. So there's a lot of things that we do as cruise line agencies, one in marketing, not only Ketchikan, but the region of Alaska, and certainly when, anytime that we're visiting on our customers, we're always looking for the new guy. We've had conversations with MSC for the last 10 years trying to work on itineraries to get them up here. We've had itineraries in place for them to come, and they just, at this point, haven't pulled the trigger, and we continue those negotiations. And I think the important thing to note is anytime that any cruise line wants to come into this market, you know, we work cooperatively with them in making sure that they, that they can get the ship in, into Alaska. And there's a lot of other things, other than outside the characteristics of the ship, as to whether they can get alongside, we have environmental issues we deal with, regulatory issues we deal with as it relates to holding capacities of gray and black water, right on down to smoke emissions and everything else. I'll try to speed this up because I know Cory's chomping at the bit to get up here. This is another thing that, that I think that we often get asked the question is, how are annual dock assignments determined? Well, I've already spoke a little bit about how we get a ship into the Alaska market, and two, the characteristics of that ship, and whether or not they even fit not only here in the Port of Ketchikan, but Juno, Skagway, Sitka, or any other new berth that's built throughout Alaska. So ship characteristics such as size, length, location of gangway, access points, and even right on down to mooring lines, where are we going to place the ship, the mooring lines once in alongside? Ship's scheduled times and arrival, departure times, and direction of travel play is part of that decision-making process. Whether they're northbound, southbound, whether they fit at berth one or not fit at berth one. One ship may have characteristics where they can fit at berth one northbound, but not southbound, so that's taken into consideration. Dock characteristics, such as the height of the pier, location, type of mooring bollards, and then available services to that gangway, whether or not ship needs to, in some cases the smaller ships, whether they need to bunker or take on fuel or whatever that may be. And then there's also a lot of navigational and operational constraints that we work with, and we work closely with some of the pilots in determining whether or not what ship, what ship would fit at what dock or would be a viable option in accommodating that class ship. Who's all involved in the annual dock assignment decision-making? Again, cruise line agencies determines the first draft of dock assignments. And again, that's based on the previously mentioned elements I talked about. Once we then, once we will develop a draft, once we have that draft in place of which we believe is pretty close to what we believe makes most sense operationally, we will turn that over to Ports and Harbors Director. In fact, we just had recently gone through that review. The approved draft is then presented to the public meeting at the Ports and Harbor Advisory Board. The public and all stakeholders may attend that meeting and make comments and/or suggestions. And then any adjustments to the dock assignments are made based on that public meeting and as if necessary and/or possible. So we'll certainly take, we'll do the draft assignments, we turn it over to Ports and Harbors, they review it. We work closely with Ports and Harbors Director. We look at all the different options, and certainly after his review, he'll offer up some suggestions, we'll look at those. But it's clearly vetted not only with, after we do the initial assignment, but it's clearly vetted with Ports and Harbors on the final draft of that dock assignment. These are some of the pictures that we take, that we use, models that we use in assigning berth assignments. Here's an example of, you can see the nose of the ship at berth three. The ship that you're looking at here now is a Princess ship at berth two with the Holland America ship at berth one. Off the top of my head, this is probably a Thursday in Ketchikan in which we will place the New Amsterdam at berth one with the Crown Princess at berth two. Some of the things here, again, that we look at are gangway locations and accessibility to those gangways, and more importantly, the mooring lines as to whether or not we have enough mooring bollards and/or points to safely accommodate the ship in alongside the berth. Again, this is an example of Ketchikan, and here's an example of Juno. We do the same in Juno. We go through, identify the berth assignments there as it relates to the characteristics of each of the individual ships calling on any particular day. And essentially you have four ships in port, you try to figure out which four docks that they would fit or we'd be able to accommodate each of those class ships. And this is Skagway, where we have, it looks like a Monday in Skagway, where we have a Royal Princess forward with the Quantum of the Seas aft. You can look at the distance between the two, you're looking at about 15 to 20 meters, anywhere from 50 to 60 feet. If you have ever stood on a bridge of a ship and looked down at the nose of the ship you're standing on in comparison to the ship that's in front of you, you think, "Oh, my God, we're touching." It's pretty close. But anyway, there again, you see the mooring points that we design. We share these with the masters of the ship the day before their arrival, so they have a pretty good idea of where the mooring points are on those ships. Last but not least, I'll talk a little bit about what a ship agent does. I get asked the question all the time, and I think I can summarize it really in one sentence, in that we provide shoreside support for any cruise line that calls not only the Port of Ketchikan, but any community throughout Southeast Alaska. Here are some of the things that we're involved in, in a chronological order. We talked a little bit about statewide scheduling, we do that. Prior to ships coming into Alaska, we make sure that we go, that they're, fill out all the environmental registrations, the liquor license, the business licenses. We work cooperatively with the sea pilots on scheduling as it relates to timings in and out of port. Obviously, we provide them the schedule and we work cooperatively with them in coordinating not only where we put the pilot on, take the pilot off, we schedule the pilot boats. Once the ship's in alongside, we work closely with Customs and Border Protection to enter and clear the ship. We work cooperatively with AMAC towing and through tug coordination as to whether or not tugs need ships. We board Rangers in Glacier Bay. We coordinate the longshoremen of tying up the ships. And more importantly, we do all the crew transfers, medical evacuations, emergency traveler assistance. People that miss ships, we'll take them to the airport. And if the captain wants Charmin toilet paper, we'll go get Charmin toilet paper. So in a nutshell, it's essentially, again, we just, any demands that are required by the line, once they're here, we're here to accommodate. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. I know that's a lot. It's kind of a high-level overview. If any of you ever want to stop by our office and have an in-depth conversation about scheduling, I'm more than happy to.
Thanks, Rick. Any questions?
I just wonder, is there a copy of this presentation somewhere that we can go back and refer to it if we want to?
Absolutely. I have one sitting over here on my desk.
Excellent. Thank you.
A hard copy, and we can probably send you a pretty one on the...
I'd like the pretty one.
You want the pretty one? No problem.
Thank you.
And again, it's a lot, and at any time, if you guys have any questions, our door's open for you guys to stop by anytime to where we can further explain the, this process. Because that's half of it.
Mr. Bradbury, then Mr. McFarlane.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate the presentation. So one, one concern or issue you hear a lot from the citizens is why does Holland America have to be at dock one when we have this beautiful gigantic ship sitting out in Anchorage, and that historic birthing doesn't necessarily benefit everyone in our community, even though that's how it's done? The question is, can Ketchikan get away from historical birthing in, specifically just in Ketchikan? Or is it something that has to be done on a much larger scale with all of Southeast Alaska?
I think you need to be careful when you ask that question because I think my response to that would be that you have to remember who buttered your bread, and that you have Holland America and/or a Princess, and some of these guys that have been calling here since 1980 and are instrumental in building the infrastructure in this port, as it relates to the number of years they've called here. But actually, I think it's really a model that's worked here in Alaska, historic priority. I've heard a number of lines say that they wish that this model was used elsewhere. To answer your question, as it relates to berth assignments and how they're allocated, again, a lot of that is based on the characteristics of the ship, of where we get passengers on and off, two, the size of the vessel. For example, I hear a lot that, you know, why do only the larger class ships go to berth three and four? And, but yet again, I can sit here and tell you, "Well, the Quantum doesn't fit at berth three or four, but it fits at berth one and two. We need a combination of those two." And, but again, you can only have that one ship on berth one and two, so why do the larger ships go to three and four? Is the, so we can accommodate two ships on one and two. I think it would, I mean, that's a tough knot. I think, I think on a, a conversation would be had as to whether or not, if what you're asking to take a Seven Seas Mariner, why it's alongside a dock and why a larger ship is at anchor. And again, that model is just really based on historic priority. And I think what you're referring to is you have a San Francisco ship of which is on a 10-day itinerary and is dropping in on a day of the week in which all four berths are filled, and those four berths that are filled are occupied by those that have had historic priority. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just trying to have it explained to the citizens on what are the difficulties of switching out certain ships.
It is. I mean, and again, what else I would say is, the model that we have now seems to work in working with the member lines of which they've agreed to operate under.
Thank you, Rick, for the presentation and the clarification. This body really needed it. I have a question, just for conversation's sake. If this body hires a tourism manager and say, for conversation's sake, again, makes an agreement with Costa to bring a ship here. Now, cruise lines will not come to one port. So who do they have to go through? Do they have to negotiate with every port, or do they go through cruise line agencies to make sure that they have an itinerary?
Well, as I, as I noted in my conversation, and the normal rule of thumb is they'll come through us. And more, more importantly, you know, we're out maybe three, four years in advance working with whomever may want to come, for example, in MSC or Disney when they came into the market. And there are a number of things that you need to look at before you can just say arbitrarily come to Alaska and say, "Hey, we want to put a ship in here." And one of them doesn't work. And two, we work closely with them in identifying itinerary that would work around the historic priority model that we have in place, and more often than not, we're pretty successful in doing so. Now, that may not be a typical day out of Vancouver on a Friday, or Seattle on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, but there are opportunities to find a day of the week in which you can operate either out of a Seattle or a Vancouver, that may be a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, that we can build a seven-day itinerary that may have a Ketchikan, Juno, Skagway, although those are challenging ports to get all three on any one given itinerary. But now that we have other options with an icy strait and a Sitka and their berths that they, they have in those ports, that we've been pretty successful so far in identifying different itineraries to be able to attract other cruise lines into Alaska. I think what we're seeing here now is some of the flexibility of some of the other lines wanting to come into Alaska, knowing that maybe a seven-day normal itinerary isn't going to work like the one I showed you as a Vancouver-Vancouver, and that they're getting a little more creative, and maybe they only do a six-day and/or a seven or an eight-day, which then puts them on different days of the week where maybe a Ketchikan may be available on a Wednesday, a Juno may be available on a Thursday, and a Skagway would be available on a Friday. And if that was a seven-day itinerary that went into the next voyage being an eight-day itinerary, they fall on a different day of the week where that, those ports may be a viable option. So yes, the flexibility is there to continue to work with any member line that wanted to come into Alaska to develop an itinerary that we can accommodate them. And certainly our, I think, I think any conversations that we have with any industry members is that, you know, you still have Ketchikan, Juno as the big three. I mean, that, along with the glacier. That's what an itinerary is going to look like in a seven-day. And so how do you fit all those, those three ports and/or whether or not, if one's not available, maybe Sitka and icy strait?
Thank you so much for the clarification.
Any other questions? You have a question from the audience? Go ahead, Mary.
Mr. Erickson, we were very concerned with NCL and Ward Cove. That would take several years to rebuild that.
Are you starting with filling those berths that we lost in NCL?
Thanks for the question. For scheduling ships in Ketchikan, it has made my job a whole lot easier, I can tell you that. Because we do have berths available on certain days of the week. So what I would say to that is, obviously, when you, when we're talking about marketing in Alaska, we're not specifically talking about Ketchikan because you just can't bring a ship into Ketchikan on Wednesday and have it go back to Vancouver. They want to go to other ports throughout the region. And so it becomes challenging in knowing, one, the holes are on Tuesday and Wednesday here in Ketchikan. But are the other ports north of us open? And that would be a Juno, a Skagway. Historically, typically, Juno's full on Wednesday, Thursday, Skagway's full Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, maybe some options on Friday. So you'd have to really get creative on trying to figure out an itinerary that would fill those days of the week. But with that said, now you take your 10-day San Francisco ship and your six-day Seattle voyage maybe they're moving into, or an eight-day, or we're starting to see eight, nine-day voyage itineraries come out. I know NCL has a couple of those on the market. Now those days, we can figure out how to plug those into those days, especially when they're alternating days, their departure days out of Seattle. So we're certainly here pounding the drum for Ketchikan and trying to figure out a way to fill those days of the week. But the issue is the other ports up the line and trying to, you know, to get them not only Ketchikan, but other ports or other destinations
Kind of piggyback off of that question. I think that raised an interesting point. But it seems that Sitka now being more equipped, is there potential that, say, with those open berths here in Ketchikan due to the loss to Ward Cove, is there potential where flexibility to work with, say, rather than having to try and squeeze in Skagway and Juno, to go like Sitka and Juno? like Sitka and Juno? Or is it, see what I'm getting at? Is there more flexibility to go to those other ports?
Yes, absolutely. And having Icy Strait with two ports, having Sitka now adding two berths, keep in mind, Sitka has always been able to accommodate four ships at anchor. So Sitka was always a viable option on any itinerary that you wanted. But now that they've added the two berths, it becomes more attractive. And so, and Sitka has had their historic calls as well. There are some ships that call Sitka that do not call Skagway. So yeah, it certainly opens up the opportunity to be able to attract a ship here in Ketchikan on a particular day of the week and then maybe the following day in Sitka. The problem that we're dealing with is Ketchikan's two open dates on Tuesday, Wednesday, guess if they called here Tuesday, guess what? Sitka's berths are full Wednesday. And a lot of that has to do with the deployment during the weekends out of Vancouver, Seattle, filling up the midday weeks. Did that answer your question, Riley?
Yeah, I was just curious, thank you.
Any other questions? You?
Earlier in the presentation, you were talking about historical birthing and why that's important because the folks that get historical birthing are the people who helped basically build this industry. Do they pay for that? Do they pay for the opportunity to have historical birthing?
No, it's just a practice that's used, that we've used ever since I've been here with this job. And Judy, I'll tell you, you know, the historic priority probably originally started with Glacier Bay in that when Glacier Bay opened up, you need a permit to operate in Glacier Bay. And only certain cruise lines had those permits at the time, I believe, were Princess, Holland, NCL, and I don't believe RCI at the time had them, they may have, but that kind of dictated the day of the week in which those member lines could call there on a specific day. And this model was here well before I got here and I think over a period of time, that was just the model that industry agreed to work with on the historic priority. And again, we have a list of Ketchikan, Juno, Skagway, and on that list I have each of the members' lines where their priority is in that particular port on any one given day. So for example, Holland America and Princess, since they've been calling here in the mid-'70s, maybe even '60s under Sitmar days if you want to go that far back, but if you were to look at Ketchikan and Juno and Skagway, I could tell you that Ketchikan and Juno, and I'll just list the first two, would be Princess and Holland America, or Holland America, Princess, and Holland America, Princess in both. However, in Skagway, Holland America didn't call Skagway, so in the pecking order for the historic priority in Skagway, I believe Holland is actually fifth because they didn't call Skagway, they actually called Haynes. So once they moved into Skagway, they then got in line for port priority for the port of Skagway.
Okay, I guess I'm trying to, as I recall with the RFP, there was something called preferential birthing. And I'm trying to figure out what's the, it sounds the same to me, historical birthing, preferential birthing. If we're offering those berths to those lines because they helped build the industry, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the difference.
You know, I probably misspoke saying that because, I mean, again, it was, the number of lines that we had calling in Alaska at that point in time certainly wasn't what we saw here today, or what we see here today. But again, it was, as far as the scheduling that we operate under or do, I mean, for lack of a better term, we just call it historic priority, that, you know, obviously, they've been here, they've been not only calling Alaska, but we've made it port-specific as it relates to how long that member line has been calling each individual port. And then, two, even more importantly, we've even narrowed it down to the day of the week they were in that port. And I think the benefit of having historic priority, it gives industry a certain level of comfort in knowing year to year that they can operate those same itineraries year after year after year, of which essentially makes my job a lot easier as it relates to, okay, we know that Holland America typically opts a seven-day Vancouver, seven-day Vancouver-Vancouver with the same itinerary each and every year. They operate three Seattle itineraries with the same itineraries every year. They operate two open-jawed ships with the same itineraries opposite of one another year after year after year. And so what that means, year after year, they're in the same port, pretty much the same given time, every day of the week, whether they're northbound or southbound through that. So it builds some assurance that they will always be able to continue to operate and market Alaska in a sense what they've historically done. It's a very good question, it's a tough one.
Anyone else? Ms. Bradbury?
I guess to piggyback off of Councilman Merzini's question is, you know, we, through the RFP process, a lot of cruise lines themselves talked about, you know, don't give out full port management, but let's do preferential birthing. And that they would be then paying for, you know, that special spot that they wanted every week. So if we were to, you know, say the council was like, hey, yeah, that sounds great, let's move forward with that, and the cruise lines are the ones coming to us for something like that, how would that work in this picture if, you know, we decided to go with the preferential birthing outlook here specifically in Ketchikan? Because it was brought up frequently during the RFP.
I guess my question to you is, what would that model look like?
I'm just posing a question, yeah.
Because I don't know. I mean, are you going to go out and offer one line preferential birthing over another line that's going to bring one ship into the market over another line that brings seven ships into Ketchikan?
You never know which line it could be.
I don't know. So that would be a question that you guys would have to wrestle with.
Posing that question as if we chose as a council to go for it that way because we had these proposals to us, how would that, you know, how would that relationship work with you guys and your scheduling? I guess that's what I'm trying to get down to. How does that relationship work in terms of scheduling Ketchikan?
I guess if you were to go down that road, obviously, I would know, I need to know whom and when, and then that changes the whole game as it relates to how I schedule ships in Ketchikan. And certainly can upset the whole apple cart through, I shouldn't say certainly, but maybe some of those other member lines may say, okay, well, we lost this day here, who's to say? And I don't know whether they'd say, well, why come any day of the week then? You know, for that other line that maybe got kicked out. But that's a tough, that's a tough question for me to sit here and answer, what would the industry think? I know that if that's what happened here, then we would have to certainly schedule around that, of what that would look like.
I had the opportunity to go to your office when I first joined the council to see how you did all the scheduling, and that was very helpful for me. I actually thought that all those little cardboard cutouts were made especially for me, because you thought I'd never understand it. So I was really pleased to hear that that's something you use every day. But my question is, you know, now we're getting a new port director, will he be included? Will he have a seat at the table with what you guys are doing, when you're working on scheduling, when you're doing on other things? I think that, from my perspective, I think that would be important for him to really learn about the industry.
I would think that the first day Mr. Hilson brings your new port director to town, that maybe his first meeting be with us. And you know what, we've always had an open-door policy, we're happy to sit down and explain how the process works. Mark and I have had a great relationship in the short time he's been acting. Mr. Corper and I had a great relationship as we go through this process. But again, in scheduling Ketchikan, we're not only scheduling the port of Ketchikan, we're scheduling the entire state of Alaska and how that all works. And I'm more than happy at any point in time during that process, if Mark or anyone of his team wanted to be fully engaged in how all that works, we're happy to sit down and explain to them what we're doing and why we're doing it.
So to whatever extent?
Well, I'm more, if he wants to spend the late hours up until midnight going through, trying to figure out whether it fits or not fits, but yeah, I mean, I have nothing, I'm more than happy to share with him of what schedules I've received. In fact, I'm more than happy to sit and, at a point in time where we get all the schedules and we print all the ports out, the way it works is, I'll print Ketchikan, I'll print Juno, I'll print Skagway, I'll print all the ports, and I'll see that I have seven, eight ships in Juno. And it's like, okay, what are we going to do with this? I mean, we have, obviously, we have a conflict because Juno can only accommodate four ships on any one given day with one at anchor. But it's pretty easy to identify, again, based on historic priority, who was called there before because you seize a lot of the same ships as I just early spoke about, you're having the consistency of each and every year, those ships calling that particular port on any given day, that, okay, we're going to see the Royal Caribbean, Celebrity, Princess, and Holland here this day, and then we have these oddball ships on different itineraries outside the norm. Well, we need to then go work with them to figure out an itinerary that would work, not excluding Juno, or Skagway, or Ketchikan, or wherever that conflict will be, but how can we change that port rotation and make it work for that individual ship? And so it's really a, well, as you can see, it's really a puzzle of how all this stuff is put together and certainly time-consuming. Again, once we receive all the schedules, it's about a two- or three-month process in manipulating it and trying to, one, identify the conflicts and try to come up with suggested resolutions for the cruise industry as it relates to what they want to do. And I think the important thing to note out of all this, we're just nothing but the facilitator on behalf of the member lines. They send us the schedules, we don't make up their schedules. They send us their schedules, and then through the process that we have available to us as it relates to historic priority, we work with each of the individual lines to help solve any of those conflicts that exist.
Thank you.
But yeah, I think Mark and I have already talked about that one. When he gets there, certainly we'd want to open invitation for sure.
I believe there's a person in the back has a question for you?
I'm just trying to understand like what the preferential birthing versus the historical birthing, is it even possible to have one port operate under preferential birthing when the rest are using historical birthing? Can you have, can you make it work with two different models in different ports? So if Ketchikan went to preferential but Skagway is still using historical birthing, do those work together?
Again, that's a difficult question. If that were the case, I would certainly try to make it work, but I think there's a whole different dynamic here too that we have to take into consideration, or at least we do. Juno has two private docks, of which you have the Franklin Dock and the AJ Dock, of which are privately owned, and they have agreements in place with some of the lines on certain days of the week to use that. Sitka's private dock, again, even though being private, they too follow the historic priority to the point. So yeah, I don't know what that model would look like as it relates to if one had preferential birthing and the other didn't. I guess for me, as a facilitator of scheduling cruise ships in Alaska, I just would need to know what those rules are. And then I'd work cooperatively with each of the member lines and trying to figure out how we can put an itinerary together for all of them.
Did that help? One more, Mary.
As other ports are talking about limits, capacities, I can understand the scheduling is as it is, but can you say to the ship, your capacity is 4,000, but this particular city is only allowing so many in the port in any one time, it seems reasonable that we're doing the limits versus restricting any one ship as it's scheduled? It's easier for your job to say limits instead of saying no to a birthday?
Hey, I've never been one to say, no, you can't come. And two, if I can get you here, we're going to get you here. The second point of that question is, I'm not aware of any limits on passenger capacity. Again, I'm not aware of any limits or restrictions, but if in fact they were to limit, whether it be five ships a day or a number of passengers, that's something, or if Ketchikan elected to do the same, that's something that we would, as industry, would have to obviously take into consideration and figure out how we're going to massage that schedule or determine how we're going to get to meet that passenger number. But I can tell you, I'm going to schedule ships in the port of Ketchikan to fill your berths to capacity if I can, unless I'm told otherwise. I mean, really, if I know that the ship wants to come to Ketchikan and there's a berth available, it's coming to Ketchikan.
That ship, the next port is going to be Juno that says we have a limit on capacity, well, where are they going to unload 1,000 people from Ketchikan to meet Juno?
Oh, if that was the case, Mary, I think what would ultimately happen, we'd take the ship here in Ketchikan, and if Juno didn't want them, we'd find another place for them. I don't know, I mean, maybe you go to Sitka, maybe you go to Icy Strait. Unless what you're saying, that if another port, and I don't want to specifically point out Juno here at this point, says we're not going to take a ship that carries any more than 3,000 people, then we're not going to take a 3,500-passenger ship here in Ketchikan and unload 500 people here in town to send them to Juno.
It starts in Seattle where the ship begins. They know they have so many tickets limited because this port down here has a limit. Other ports may follow through with the idea, and therefore it's easy to fill the bucket according to a standard limit to avoid over tourism.
Yeah, I guess what I would say is, I wouldn't think that the cruise line would limit the amount of passengers that they would place on their ship. I think their goal is to, obviously, they have a lower berth count of passengers that it's designed to carry. I would think that the cruise lines would continue to market to fill their ships. If there was any, if there was any port that wanted to limit capacity, the number of passengers in port on any one given day, any one given week, or any one given year, then we'd have to, we'd have to massage the schedule to accommodate. And I'm not sure how I'd go about doing that, but I would say we'd cross that bridge when we get there, if it happens.
Any other questions for Mr. Erickson? Okay, thank you, Rick, very much.
Yeah, appreciate you.
Okay, next we have Kari Erickson, Director, Southeast and Yukon Operations, HAP Alaska-Yukon.
I need to pull this down from the Jolly Green Giant, anyway. My total of 5.4, not 5.3. All right, well, thank you for having me speak tonight. My name's Kari Erickson, I'm with HAP Alaska-Yukon, motor coach operator, and I reside here in Ketchikan, but I also oversee the motor coach ports in Juno, Skagway, and then our hotel operations in Skagway and up into the Yukon. So it's kind of nice because it affords me the opportunity to see how different areas, different areas within the region kind of handle some of the issues, so gives me some good perspective for bringing things back home. The motor coach piece that I'll explain is not tied as directly to the marketing of guests or ships as some of the other speakers that are up here. However, it does so indirectly by helping to create a positive impression and experience for the arriving ships and guests by having organized and safe dock operations for their So as far as industry and port interactions, we, as a company, feel so fortunate in having the ability to be able to actually the ability to be able to actually pull coaches onto a dock next to a ship. I know that is a fairly foreign thing in many, many destinations. That being said, we also understand the hazards of working in an environment with pedestrian, buses, and so many other moving pieces and parts that go on down on the port. I know our company definitely always puts safety first, and we definitely appreciate the collaborative nature of our relationship with Ports and Harbors staff and the ship crew and cruise on agencies. We have a dedicated staff that work each of the ships that we service, and essentially they act as a liaison between the onboard short excursion staff, many of the local vendors, and then our own coaches that we bring down as well. These individuals are in radio communication with each of the coaches and also work with the onboard short excursion team to ensure that the buses are staged and ready to go at least 20 minutes before the guests come off and are ready to get onto their tours. They provide the local vendors with their bus numbers, the location of where the bus is actually located on the pier, because it can be kind of a sea of vehicles down there, as I'm sure most of you have seen, and then coordinate with each of those individual vendors prior to releasing the coaches to go off and have fun and experience Ketchikan. Our reps also remain on the dock until the ships all aboard and will work with the vendors that have ships sold transportation components, and then also work with the ship to keep them up to date as to return times. We have a lot of ships that have short port calls, and so many of the tours will be returning right at all aboard, so we're down there waiting, keeping the communications strong with the ship, and letting them know when their guests are slated to be back to the dock. Because while we would obviously love to increase our population, that's not the way we want to go about it and have angry missed ship guests left behind in Ketchikan. Our teams maintain an open line of communication with the port employees and work with them to address any concerns related to safety or guest experience. For instance, if there's issues with tripping hazards, traffic flow, stationary equipment that's impeding optimum loading areas, we'll work with Mark's group as well as cruise on agencies in a cooperative manner to get things moved where possible. We also share our information freely with the city's team in hopes of future improvements for everyone and, you know, gladly provide coaches or staff to come down and test out different scenarios on the dock or wherever that is needed. And then as far as dispatching tours, that's a Juno picture. I'm sorry, I didn't have a good one in Ketchikan. But to start at the beginning, when a cruise line decides to come to Alaska, they will typically select a primary transportation company to work with, along with a multitude of other vendors, ranging from fishing to ziplining. And if the vendors who own or operate a given tour don't have their own transportation, then they will seek out that primary transportation provider and ask them to provide that service for their guests. So the Hap and Alaska Coach Tours buses that you see running around on the roads are not necessarily just our own transfers or tours. We're providing transportation for many, many local operators in town. The individual vendors themselves will provide their departure times and capacities to the ships to sell in advance, and that has gone out, gosh, I mean, it used to be every, you know, six months prior to the ship's call, we'd be looking at giving them times. Now they're up two to three years in advance, so they really, really are expanding that window. It's insane. It's hard to wrap your mind around, but as Rick mentioned, that's how far out itineraries are being looked at as well. And then, so all those allocations are provided to the cruise lines, they begin selling, the ships will also sell those tours onboard, and then it's a pretty dynamic experience because you really don't know what your tours are going to look like or your numbers until the evening before the ship calls. They'll sell right up until that point, and then at that point, we will then try to build our dispatch, which is, again, like a big puzzle, similar to, or maybe even worse than Rick's job. Down on the pier, the bus company reps will work with each of the vendors as well. The next morning or the day of the ship arrival, they'll call the coaches down to the dock as staggered as possible just to try to keep things orderly, and if backers are required, then our reps down there are ready to assist. The reps will hold signs and direct guests to their appropriate buses, and then regularly check in with the drivers on passenger numbers and report, kind of go back and bounce back and forth either between the motor coaches, the ship, and then the vendors, just keeping them apprised of what the numbers are looking like. So it's a nice collaborative experience, I think, for everybody. And then, obviously, for safety purposes, we always require that our drivers stand at their doors, so we really try to keep them there so that we're preventing slips, trips, and falls, because we don't want that to happen anywhere, but definitely not on our piers. And then as far as working cooperatively, Hap and ACT are obviously competitors, but we're certainly friendly competitors, and in fact, we work together quite often on providing charter services on some of our peak days, and we meet regularly, we typically will do a preseason meeting where we get together and not only discuss port concerns but potential changes community-wide, so it's a good relationship. And then as far as challenges and resolutions, we really haven't encountered too many challenges aside from the items noted previously, such as stationary obstacles on the docks causing safety concerns related to guests or even our own equipment. We really love the planters down there, our buses, and I say that facetiously, but the city's been great and has allowed us to put temporary markings on the entrance to the pier to act as kind of a guide for our coaches, which has been, has been great. And the other piece that has been very, very beneficial, I think, for the guests as well as for us is the crossing guards. They're amazing, definitely help improve the guest experience down there and certainly the safety. And then port security has been very helpful in addition to that with dispersing, helping to disperse crowds on the piers that, you know, they all come off at once, obviously, and everybody's anxious to get out on their tour and at times can spill out into the through fair, so we appreciate the port, the port security guards' assistance out there, kind of keeping people a safe distance away from the moving vehicles. And I think ultimately, from our perspective, it all comes down to good communication, which I feel has definitely happened in the past, and, I mean, for us, we are just really, really looking forward to getting back to normal and having a great season and working with all of the parties again this year. So, yeah, so thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm going to ask the first question.
Yeah.
So one of the most common comments we get in regards to buses is emissions, fumes. In my prior career, I don't, not saying this specifically about you guys, but I know that for a lot of fleets, Ketchikan is the repository where they send vehicles to die, that they just aren't good enough for other places. What, if anything, are you folks doing as an industry to mitigate some of these emissions that we have going on downtown? We do get a lot of comments from folks.
Yeah, certainly. Environmental concerns are definitely, I mean, at the top of our priority list, and we have several initiatives that we currently practice, and I can only speak for my company. We have a no idling policy, and that is just a deal breaker, not only for the environment, but it also helps us obviously save on fuel costs. But that being said, you may see, I talked to Jay last year, and he brought up, oh, there was a complaint about a coach idling, and on inclement weather days, you get all those hot bodies getting, that are wet, getting onto a bus, your windows fog instantly. And so obviously, you know, with a focus on safety, our number one priority is making sure that that driver can see and can operate that vehicle safely. So that does require at times to keep the, or turn the defrost on and get that engine running and get the coach defogged. We also have to build air pressure in the coaches, so that may be another time when you might see, oh, they said that they weren't idling, but their bus is running. So those would be kind of the two scenarios that are exceptions to the rule. And then as far as reducing, not only the no idling policy, but we are looking at different types of fuel. Biodiesel is something that our company is strongly interested in. We utilize that in Juno and are definitely considering that here in Ketchikan. So those are kind of our two biggies right now. I would love to say we're going to get a whole new fleet of coaches, but I think I would probably lose my job if I made that promise to you. And I will point out, Ketchikan, while it may have older equipment, it's not necessarily that they come here to die. We run far fewer miles than a lot of our counterparts in the other areas of the state, so you need newer equipment that can run, go the distance. I'd like to say we have the best mechanics in town, too, so they're able to keep some of the older coaches up and running, which we certainly appreciate.
Thank you. Other questions? Lalette, and then Abby.
So there's a lot of money out there for electric infrastructure right now, and I'm wondering if there's any kind of incentive that you would take advantage of to maybe start adding some electric buses to the fleet, especially for the ones that are going to have to be right in the downtown.
Yeah, and the maintenance side is definitely not my exact area of expertise, but our maintenance group definitely is looking at options. I do know that electric coaches are outrageously expensive and may not be the most reliable from what I've heard, but definitely that is something that our company is researching.
Kind of to piggyback off of Councilmember Flora's comment, on buses, isn't there restrictions on height and length in Ketchikan to get around, AKA the federal building corner and so forth, that going to get newer coaches that are often built longer and taller and more of that luxury ride would cause a problem within our streets as they are?
Yeah, and we, so we do operate, we operate, obviously, some of our land programs into the Yukon that use those luxurious, larger motor coaches, 45-foot coaches, and actually, when we were shipping coaches south last spring, we, from Skagway, we had one come off here and test the roads downtown, and it did get around okay, but it just, it definitely depends upon the coach itself.
Any other question? Ms. Patani?
Thank you, Kari, for the presentation. I have one question, and I get asked this by the local tour operators. When you are picking up, or your buses are picking up tours done by the ShoreXs, how do your coaches accommodate the coaches of the independent tour operators?
You mean in this space?
Yeah.
Oh, of course. You mean, how do we? I think, I mean, our reps would, I would hope, go out and just communicate where coaches are pulling in and work to ensure that everybody fits down there, definitely. But it is a crowded space, no doubt.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one follow-up, not necessarily a question, but one of a statement of, I think, a huge thing that the buses do for Ketchikan that wasn't mentioned is, all of these buses that are heading out with a driver, they're also their guides, so they're not only just driving them to point A to point B, but they're talking about the community, pointing out locations, destinations, places to visit, and kind of giving them a little bit more of, more of the experience and information about our community that they might not get just by getting a taxi straight out or walking out. So there is that added. I know I've been on quite a few tours, and they're pointing out like places to eat and Creek Street and get out to shop and local shops, and so they do have that factor as they ride through all of the community.
Thanks, Abby. And definitely, our number one goal is to hire locally, so if you know of anybody who's interested in being a driver, we are certainly ready to hire and starting our local training program.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Our next speaker will be Krista Hagan, Vice President of Operations, Taqwan Air and Kwanti Adventures.
Thank you. Thanks, Patty, for queuing up my two slides. Thank you, Vice Mayor Flora, and the city council members. My name is Krista Hagan. I am the Vice President of Operations for the Alaska Rainforest Sanctuary, also doing business as Kwanti Adventures. That is the South End, Herring Cove property, where we do bear tours, zip lines, and walking tours, and also we operate at the North End at Whipple Creek Adventure Carts. We also have an operation, a zipline operation in Juno. So today I'm here to speak about how shore excursion operators work with cruise lines to create tour offerings, also how do these companies help promote Ketchikan to the cruise industry and their passengers. The second topic will be how local businesses engage with cruise industry before, during, and after the season to promote their product and Ketchikan as a destination. And then third, the impact of satisfaction ratings. So I'll start first here with, and Patty, I have a clicker, don't I? Oh, the power is mine. So here's slide number two. I just wanted to show all of the partner relationships we have with the lines. We're very busy, and we appreciate it. Kari mentioned we're looking forward to 2022 to get back to normal operations. In my 15-plus years in the industry, I've never seen a gap in operation, so it was something to navigate around. So, and I also want to, you know, emphasize that we, too, are looking for local hires, so we will be working with the KVB on posting those opportunities, so please, help us spread the word on that. So starting with shore excursion operations, and how do we work with the cruise lines to create excursions? And that really is to, so pretty much, I think, what we are, legacy business with the lines. We started in the early 2000s and worked with the lines at the beginning to determine where is there a gap in providing an excursion opportunity, and how do we best represent Ketchikan and all we have to offer in the Alaska experience? What the cruise lines are looking for are wide-open spaces, they're looking for cultural experiences, they look for what are the local experiences in food and beverage, and also they're looking for wildlife. So we look at adventure. So what is the customer looking for, and how can we supply that experience? Once we assess that, then we start vetting opportunities and adventure options, if you will, or on the flightseeing side, I should say, I also work for the business development side of Taqwan Air, is we look at where, first of all, what would be our impacts to the environment and to the locals, and then we also do a cost-benefit analysis on any type of tour infrastructure that we'd be putting in place. That includes capital investment and then ensuring that we have the relationship with the partner lines to have longevity with them. So it's working in close collaboration with them to identify where we can create those tour experiences. And then, once we get into an agreement with the line on what that experience will be, we start working on capacity and what can we provide to each and every line. We work closely with their marketing teams to ensure that they're promoting accurate experiences so that we're not misrepresenting or under-delivering what we promised to the guests when they come to Ketchikan. We're constantly auditing their websites to ensure that we are represented correctly in all aspects of the tour experience. And also, we work with them on an annual basis to determine, are we offering the right thing? Are there things that we need to tweak, and is there value added that we should provide that creates a standout product to represent Ketchikan? So those are all nuances that we work closely with their marketing programs and their shore excursion departments. So the way we work with them preseason is we do assess our agreements annually, so we do have a couple lines where we have multi-year agreements. We do have a couple lines where we have multi-year agreements, but we address those. We look at, we have to look at what our, any increases happen. This year inflation is incredible, so we are looking at those impacts so that we can be sustainable. We're not necessarily protecting our margins year over year. We know that the cruise lines absolutely do, and so we want to make sure we're competitive in the market. And so, you know, it is, it is something that while there is a lot of supply out there, the demand really needs to equate so that we're, we're making, we have that cost benefit and the return on investment. So that's preseason. We identify to make sure that we have the insurance levels that, that are required. They're very high as far as the liability limits, and they're very expensive on all ends, on the adventure side and flightseeing. So we ensure that our insurance levels do meet theirs contractually. And then, and then we also ensure that we have the allocations and the operational inventory to execute what we promised two years prior. So there is an assumption that we will continue the partnership year over year, two years out. As Rick had mentioned and Kari mentioned, we're working on 2023 block allocation, and that again is assuming that, and we're assuming the risk, that our assets are committed to the lines. So, so there is a liability and risk in, in ensuring that we are going to be operational and have those, those assets available to the lines in two years. So then during the season, we work closely with the onsite shore excursion managers. They're a department on every ship. They're the ones that come off and ensure that the customers know where to go, they liaison directly with us as a partner. And then we also do work with the bus companies, Hall and Ameri, the Hall and America Princess Group, the HAP Group, and then the Alaska Coach Tours. We work with both of them to ensure that not only do we have the transportation directly, so if it's a third-party line that the bus company is working with, say for example, an NCL, which doesn't have a bus company representative in town, then they'll contract out either ACT or the Hall and America Princess Team to provide their transportation. That's a third-party partnership with us then too, so we'll work with the, with the line that they're contracted with, or the bus company that they're contracted with directly. They help also relay that communication on what, what is sold for that day, that particular day. We'll also coordinate any ADA accommodations that we're making, and, and oftentimes it'll be where maybe our rep is on, on the pier, but theirs is, so we'll communicate with them. So we collaborate very closely with the bus companies, both for third-party cruise lines and direct owner, owned cruise lines, or partnership cruise lines. And then we also work very closely with cruise line agencies all the time. I mean preseason, postseason, in-season, and we work closely with them, especially when it comes to determining what's going to be, what does our future look like here in Ketchikan? We certainly want them to be able to conflict negotiate cruise lines to come to this port on non-peak days, because that helps us too. I mean, you know, our inventory is peaks and valleys as well, so everyone shares the same peak here in Ketchikan. And then the same effect happens to our northern neighbors. So, so we work with them and, and, you know, we also are continually looking at what opportunities are out there to support any cruise lines that want to come here to Ketchikan as the best destination? What can we provide the, the new cruise lines that are coming? Not only just to market Ketchikan, to say, look at what we already have, look at the mature product we have, it's proven product and it's in high demand. So that's how we sell Ketchikan as a premium destination. And then so for post, postseason, again, it's really just, we go and we visit them. We go to their corporate offices, whether it be in Santa Clarita, or Seattle, or Miami, or Orlando, we're there. And we're also going to national industry events to represent Ketchikan and to highlight Ketchikan as a port. And so that's really our pre, mid, and postseason communication with, with our, with our partnership, and they're year-round partnerships with these lines. So then the next would be the impact of satisfaction ratings. So, you know, it's, we have to be five-star. Our, if we're not, and we'll be positioned, we get leverage when we're one of the best experiences in, in port. And we get leverage with that, and we'll leverage that by saying, hey, you know, put us at the top of your website. And I'll tell you, the dividends on being at the top of the website for a shore excursion when you're competing with 40-plus in a, in a destination like Ketchikan where everything is awesome here, is, is really a premium. So, and we also get feedback from the shore excursion managers nightly, so we're very proactive. When we have an incident that occurs that's unplanned or unfavorable, we immediately go to the cruise lines, we're completely transparent, and we'll tell that representative on the, we don't want them to be surprised by it, by a customer, and we let them know in advance. And we let them know also how we mitigated the impacts of that negative experience, because we want the ShoreX managers to have a seamless environment with zero hiccups. So we're in partnership with them all the way through the excursion to the, to the excellent experience that our guests receive. So, so the collaboration with the onboard staff is critical. And then also, as I mentioned, we, well, I didn't mention this, but we work very closely with the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau. I'm a board member, and I just know that, you know, the customer service that we, the customer service training that we can get from the KVB, the, we work with them with independent travelers and bookings, and the marketing program is so robust that it actually complements what, what I'm doing for the companies I represent, and it's a critical component. So working closely with the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau, working closely with the cruise line agencies, the local bus companies, and I also work very closely with CLIA on national, on federal and state issues with the cruise industry, and also working with the Chamber and also the city and borough. So, you know, we as partners do a really good job of collaborating. It's a very mature industry, and I look forward to giving you more information about how we're actually going beyond to be more proactive about our collaboration and our, and our transparency as an industry to work with all the stakeholders and our neighbors in Ketchikan in my next presentation coming up. Vice Mayor, I'm, I'm ready to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Matani?
Krista, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks.
I have one question. Not all guests buy tours or excursions or zip lines or even go-karts onboard. Do you partner with any local booths or operators in the KVB to sell your product? Or do you have inventory to sell your product independently from independent operators?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and that's another part of our business that is really important, because as you know, the cruise lines, as Kari mentioned, do sell up to 25, four hours in advance of arrival. So that's a lot of liability and assets that we're holding that we're not sure are going to be filled. So it's critical for us to be able to capitalize on the independent traveler. And when the, when we talk about independent traveler with the cruise lines, it's that traveler that isn't pre-booking an excursion through the cruise line. It's them saying, they're, and they're savvy out there now. So the demand for independent bookings and, you know, when they come into a port on same day is really high. So yes, both the Alaska Rainforest Sanctuary and Taqwan Air do use that surplus inventory that is available, made available the day before, ready to sell to the independent traveler who's coming off the pier. We do bid on city booths so that we can be present down there, and we also bid on KVB booths.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
Between your two organizations, about how many jobs do you think are provided in the summer, going forward this year, for example?
Well, this year, I'm just not quite sure. My budget scenario is I might have about five, but in a, in a 2019 year, which is a very, very good year for us, I would say that it's just shy of 200 employees. In the, for year-round though, with both companies, you know, Taqwan Air is operating year-round, but also with the Alaska Rainforest Sanctuary management team, that is very slim right now, we are, we have about 50 employees. Thanks for asking.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Our next speaker is Patty Mackey, whenever she's ready.
All right, thank you. I'm going to keep my comments really brief and kind of just focused on, believe it or not, our contract with you. Each year when you approve the operations and marketing funding that you provide for us, there is a scope of work that's attached to that contract, and in that we say we're going to do certain things for you, for the city and for the community. So I kind of wanted to just walk through those really quickly. The last time that our scope of work was reviewed and approved by the city council was a year ago, January, so it's a fairly recent update. Same, actually, you know, really the same kinds of things that we were doing before. I just thought that there was some repetition, so I just tried to clean it up. So among our agreements with you, these are the, basically the four things that we do with marketing the community, whether it's marketing to independent travelers, marketing meetings and conventions and the Ted Ferry. But specific to tonight, we have a couple of bullets there promoting Ketchikan before, during, and after visits by cruise passengers, and enhancing relationships with travel industry professionals, which includes the cruise industry, tour operators, travel agents, and journalists to promote Ketchikan. We also provide year-round visitor information services, which of course is of benefit to passengers. When it comes to serving as a, we also serve as a liaison and a community resource to the cruise line industry and their passengers and staff. This was something that was implied in previous scopes of work and kind of mentioned in different places, but I put it all together this time. And I'm going to go through kind of what some of the activities are that we do that relates to each of these agreements. And then finally, assisting the city as requested on matters pertaining to the success of the community as a visitor destination for all types of travelers. So promoting Ketchikan before, during, and after visits, and why is this important? Well, the cruise industry thrives on word-of-mouth advertising, just like any business does. They want those positive experiences to take place, and they want people at the dinner table talking about what a great time they had in each of the ports. That benefits Ketchikan in terms of, you know, making sure that we're always a, a top destination on the cruise ship itinerary. And as Krista mentioned, the satisfaction ratings, which are such an important part of the individual company's relationships with the cruise lines, we want to do what we can to make sure that we're providing the best service. So in addition to things that you are already aware of, such as our visitor guide, the website, you know, we do a lot of training. We offer both customer service training to employees, and we also train people to teach the class, Alaska Host, which is specific to tourism, to their own companies. And then of course, the TBMP, which you're going to hear more about from Krista in a moment. And of course, providing visitor information throughout the community is also an important part of what we do. And then after the visit, we get lots of emails, phone calls from visitors who lost something while they were here, or they didn't buy enough of the, you know, salmon berry jam that they picked up at one of the stores, where can I get it? Or for Christmas gifts and things like that. So we, we always enjoy trying to help visitors. Sometimes we have to tell them that it was a different city, but usually we could get them where they need to go. In order to enhance relationships with the travel industry, there's a lot of things that we do that are key to that. For years, I've served on the Alaska Travel Industry Association Board and their marketing committee, and I serve alongside cruise representatives from several of the lines. We interact regularly with travel agents. Travel agents and tour operators are huge sellers of cruises, and the cruise lines make special accommodations for travel agents. They, they pay them commissions still, probably the only travel sector in the tourism industry that actually still pays commissions to travel agents. So anything we can do to help train and educate them about what's available in Ketchikan means more business for the community. We visit cruise lines and meet with personnel from the marketing department when it's appropriate, shore excursions, and other divisions. We work a lot with cruise line hosted travel writers while they're in port to sponsor and host them while they're here. You're all familiar, I believe, with the Ketchikan Story Project, which was funded specifically as an educational and promotional tool for the cruise industry. So all of the films, all of the footage, all of the photography, every asset that came out of that project is available to the cruise lines and has been marketed to them over the years, that they are able to use any and all of that in their own promotional efforts and sales efforts. And then of course, we also make available photography, our promo videos, we review and edit information about Ketchikan. We do a lot of those kinds of tasks just to help make sure that the information is accurate. Some of the things that we've done for the city of late, you all, I'm sure, remember the resource committee? And of course, while it, you know, it ended up that, that that committee kind of morphed into the Southeast Mayor's Committee, which then morphed into agreements between the cruise lines and the ports and the whole thing, nobody knew last year where we were going with any of the ships returning, but it was a good thing to be prepared and be available. We conduct research regularly, we gather data on visitor numbers and visitor spending. We have frequently provided information. Last year, when BNA was working on protocol guidelines for the city, we assisted the city manager's office in getting ahold of businesses that could then provide information, and we provide letters of support, such as the Coast Guard City Renewal Project that took place the last few years. So those are just kind of a quick review of some of the things that we do that involves working with the cruise industry and interacting with them and their personnel. And happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions for Patty? You got off easy. Oh, go ahead, Riley.
So just kind of shoot us straight, I got the feeling that, and maybe I was wrong, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I got the feeling that there was some concern or some disagreement or whatever with us hiring a tourism manager, because you guys felt that that was kind of already kind of your gig, for lack of a better word. Is that correct, or can you kind of clarify that?
Well, to be perfectly honest, I think this whole work session was intended to share with you what's already being done by industry, so that as you continue your conversation about what you're going to do and what that person's duties are. Yeah, there was some issue, you know, there were a lot of people that were confused at first that, that you were going to try and basically replace what the Visitors Bureau does. And I'm not, you know, I still don't know for sure if that's what your intent is, but what I understood from the meetings and things that I've been to, you're basically looking to market the port. And I am just sharing with you, here's some things that are already happening.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Krista Hagan, again, KVB Tourism Best Managers, Best Management Practices Committee.
Thank you. First of all, I just got back from Fairbanks, and I think the temperature in here rivals the temperature I just came from, and that was minus 18 degrees. Is it just me? Okay. So I'm, I'm, I'm the Chair of the Tourism Best Management Practices Committee, which is a committee under the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau. And the, we just recently had a conversation about making this committee a standing committee, but that requires a vote to change the bylaws. As you all know, that's not easy, so we're going to be, well, we, that is an initiative for this next year, so that it becomes a long-term priority of the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau and staff support, and also board leadership. staff support, and also board leadership. So some of these slides may be familiar with some of you, as I actually stole them from Patty's past presentation, so thank you very much, Patty, for your work on this. And essentially, this is a snapshot of the cover page of our website. It will be up and active in the next couple of months. We're doing some more work on it, just to make sure that as we are rolling out the program this summer, that it actually represents all that we intended to roll out in 2019 accurately for 2022. I brought this slide up because that is, it basically is a summation of the mission of the effort of the Tourism Best Management Practices. So the reason why I am the board chair, or I'm not the board chair, but the reason I am the committee chair, sorry, Joe, I don't mean to take away your thunder, he's our chair, is because I actually worked on the initiative in Juneau, when it was created and driven in the late 1990s. And so I was able, as an operator at that time, was able to watch it work. And essentially, what was my greatest pleasure was be able to have one-on-one conversations with those people in the community who felt affected by impacts of the industry, and oftentimes they were unintended impacts. So not only did I get to learn from my neighbors, because I grew up in Juneau, but I also got to respond to them, and respond to them in a reasonable way. One was either to educate and to come to a mutual understanding, or number two, to solve a problem that I wasn't maybe aware of, or number three, to correct a commitment that we had made on behalf of the Tourism Best Management Practices in Juneau voluntarily that we may have fallen short of. So that's really what I'm excited about this program here today, and so I'll just go to the next slide. So our priorities, and number one is that we provide the community with the means to have questions and concerns addressed in a timely manner by those who are impacting the operating environment in which we're working in. We're going to enhance the visitor experience, and Ketchikan's reputation as a top-rated destination as a result. And this will offer tools and guidelines for industry partners wishing to practice the high standards. And so this isn't just going to be for those mature operators, but it's going to be really great for the new operators coming in. But most importantly, it's going to be for those people who don't feel as if they have a voice to raise their concerns, or they feel as if those concerns are raised on deaf ears, or they think it's too big of an industry even to make an impact. So most importantly, it's a conduit for transparency, and the way that we'll do that transparency, I'll share with you here as we move forward. So again, the key components are that it's industry-led. When I say voluntary, it means you don't have to, you don't have to sign on. You know, you can just run your operation the way that you do, but we are going to create, there are incentives built in, and we're going to continue to look at incentives for people to want to be a part of this program. And quite frankly, as we look and sell this to our peers in the industry, is to say that it's non-punitive if you follow through with the voluntary agreement that you're making in this program. So it really is that base of encouraging stakeholders and community input and engagement and common understanding. If we can get to that level, then I think that we can have better harmony and better solutions that actually take into account other people's perceptions of what is going on. So then, and it's adaptable, the annual review and ongoing opportunities to fine-tune this program. We will be reviewing this year over year. We will be seeking your guidance, your feedback. We'll also be seeking, we'll be reviewing those calls that come in, we'll be looking at trends. We'll also be making sure that those that commit to this program are following through. So the partnership, you know, many people think that if it's being managed and overseen by the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau, it's just the Visitors Bureau membership, and that is absolutely not true. It outreaches to every stakeholder in Ketchikan. And this runs the gamut. I'll show you all of the types of businesses that we're seeking to sign on to this. But it is, it's not just those that sign on voluntarily for it to be successful, it's promoting it to our neighbors and everybody in the community to participate, so that we, we're only as strong as the feedback we get. But you can see here the snapshot of those that we are actively soliciting to be a part of this program as operators, and then, and we are getting membership, we have the membership information for the chamber and rotary, and we are, we're soliciting those membership partnerships as well directly. So it's incumbent on us to ensure that we educate the community and promote this program. And so I'll take this opportunity to state that we do have upcoming here on the 31st of March, at Cape Fox, in one of their meeting rooms, is going to be a public, really, it's going to be a public presentation of the TBMP, and we'll have stakeholder or like operator tables that will have subject matter experts on each section of the TBMP by operation to be able to answer questions about those voluntary compliance initiatives per sector, so that if anyone has questions as to, well, what are we going to, what are we going to call in about your business? You know, really, we're there to be able to help open up that dialogue, to say, this is how you can help us be better. So that's going to be the 31st of August, starting at 6:00 PM, and we'll have more information to you, and I'll be presenting to a future council meeting at Public Comments. So the subsection agreements, as I was just mentioning, our subject matter experts will be representing each one of these bullet points in the public meeting on March 31st. Every one of these sections is outlined in the TBMP itself, and if you haven't seen the Tourism Best Management Practices packet, I'm happy to provide that to you and a link, well, I'll just provide it electronically, but I'll provide copies for that, too, at the next council meeting. Key components of the program is that the partners agree to implement the appropriate best practices that were identified by the subject matter experts, the key stakeholders, approximately two years ago. Partners will also agree to address these concerns in an expeditious manner. I believe it's three days in which they have to address a concern. How that's going to work really is that the KVB staff will be, one of the staff members is identified to be the manager of the hotline. So there will be a number that is going to be public and made available to, through advertising and just general awareness through the KVB, a number that people can call if they have a complaint. And that complaint may not even have anything to do with voluntary compliance in the program, it may be something else outside of that. Maybe it's just a question about, are you following the regulations within the city? You know, so we're there, and that question will still go to the operator. The operator, whether it's relevant to TBMP or not, will still be required to respond to that, and it will be tracked and logged by staff at the KVB. It provides a resource for all partners, including the handbook that I'm mentioning here, the website that we'll be publishing here within the next two months, and again, that phone number. The website also has, and I'll show you here, a form where people can go and submit their complaint in writing if they prefer. This is basically an outline of the general agreements in place. Most importantly, sharing the responsibility for ensuring that the visitor experience in Ketchikan exceeds expectations, that quality, the quality, the highest quality port call. So as Patty mentioned, it's all, we're going to leverage the KVB and their training resources, because it does have a component to train all staff on the TBMP and what we're complying to, and what their leadership team is signing on to and committing to. And it's self-monitoring, meaning that if we can self-report before it's reported by a, you know, an industry or even, you know, a community member, then we're winning. Cultural protocols, super important, this cultural awareness and appropriation and making sure that we're respecting Alaska natives and the other cultures. So we want to be factually correct. Again, and that accurate information on accessibility, adherence to federal, state, and local laws, and then the wildlife viewing protocols. So the TBMP website will feature resources that already have guidelines built in, including city ordinances and those types of regulatory requirements that are built in that we already should be complying with. But if there is something that a volunteer organization is not complying with, this is also a conduit to report. So the website is going to be at ketchikan.tbm.p.info. Again, we will, that'll be live and ready by the March 31st presentation at Cape Fox. We'll advertise that publicly throughout many of the media outlets. Then the hotline there is also via email and phone. So we have three ways to accept feedback, through an email, a phone number, and that phone number is actually an answering machine, so it reduces the uncomfortable nature of sometimes people talking face, you know, person to person. And, but it can't be anonymous, because we need to be able to get back to the person who leaves the feedback, as our commitment to the program. This is what it looks like to submit electronically through the website. Category is important. I showed you the categories for all of the areas in which the TBMP is focused, operating areas. Category is important, because we're going to be looking at the feedback we're getting. I believe Juneau received in 2019 over 250 comments. So, and they're broken out by category, so you're able to see what the trends are, and then that is public information. And I mentioned, these are some of the resources that we'll be providing on that TBMP website. Advertising is critical. We'll be promoting member, you know, the voluntary members. We'll be also promoting TBMP regularly through the paper and all other news avenues that we can, to ensure that the, this is just examples of Juneau, and what's great is they pave the way to do it right, and we're going to piggyback on that and emulate their successes. But this is examples of what we will be doing preseason, postseason, and then throughout the year. And that's all I have, so I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I thought it was interesting, since I heard the presentation a couple of weeks ago, that, I know there was no way to legally control what was going on out there at Herring Bay, but this TMBC, whatever it is.
Close.
Is, NBC. Anyway, it's a way for the member groups to actually control it within themselves, and they don't have to have law enforcement, that the group is going to be enforcing their own. And so I think it's a very efficient use. And you were talking about having, like, stickers or something in windows, so that, you know, we are a proud member of type of thing, and I just, I think people will start to look for those things. I was wondering, on the phone, so the people are leaving a message on an answering machine, how fast do you expect to call them back on that?
It's a requirement of the voluntary program to call back within three days. And three business days. The other point, how does three business days equate to a 24/7 operation in the summer? Okay, at any rate, three business days. I'm assuming it's traditional business days, but we can clarify that. But it's three business days, and then I, if I understand correctly, we loop back to let the representative at the KVB know that that was followed through? Patty, if you don't mind.
Yes, that's, that's the intent, is that we get a hotline email or phone call that is passed on to the business or organization that was mentioned in the call. They get their three days, they respond back to the individual and also to the KVB, so that we can log that information on the spreadsheet that we'll be keeping.
And if I may, Vice Mayor, I think I heard a question there, just to clarify with Lillet. That as far as Herring Cove goes, you mentioned that we self-police. The other, the other thing here is that by, operators understanding what we're voluntary and complying to, we're going to hold each other accountable to that. So if I see an operator that might be working outside of the agreed voluntary guidelines, I too can then go to them directly. Now, I could report if I feel as if there is zero response to what I'm seeing, but I'm also considered a community neighbor, so I would also be able to report under that program.
I have a comment. I'm very excited about this committee and about making the marketing and presentation on March 31st. I've been part of this committee even before it was a committee. Members of the community, Mr. Richard Harney, Flannin Borough, and other stakeholders were part of coming up with this whole agenda, this whole TMBP, best practices, what we are putting out there. Juneau has it for the last 20 years. It's about time, it's high time we have it, so that we are accountable, not only to the passengers, but to our local community members and citizens. And 15 years ago, 18 years ago, Juneau used to get thousands of complaints. They're down to 15, 20, 70 now. So it's worked well, it's proven, and I'm looking forward to making sure that this works, that every business, every tour operator, every citizen is a part of this, and it will do wonders for our community, for our guests. It will be a win-win experience for everybody. I mean, businesses will have flags, businesses will have decals, businesses will have training that they will respond to complaints or comments. And it is a good thing for the community when the community is not sure whether it's over tourism, or whether tourists are being bad towards citizens, or the other way around. So this is a good thing, it's a long time coming. Thank you, Krista.
Is there a fee for members to join this program?
There is no fee, just a commitment.
And then, one of, obviously, there's two purposes of the group, resolve issues with resident, or concerns from residents and industry, and then enhance visitors' experiences. What exactly, I mean, everyone has a different picture of how to enhance an experience, so what would this program be enhancing for the community?
Well, I think what's good for our neighbor is good for our visitor, and so if our neighbors are identifying areas that either are deemed unsafe, or other areas that have been identified by industry as, that we want to voluntarily improve on through, just that maybe not be regulated, but something that is a best practice. For example, if you're going to take, in a very, very high-traffic area, if it's recommended you don't take a left-hand turn, because then you're inhibiting traffic flow behind you that would build up in backlog, you don't take a left-hand turn. While that's not regulated by a law or a sign that says one way, it's just acknowledging negative impacts by a bus turning left when really it should go right, go a different route. So, I mean, that's kind of an example of those impacts.
So what, again, I think it's really, it's what is a positive experience for our locals also transitions into a positive experience for our guests.
Can I have a follow-up, Your Honor? And then also, on, obviously, I mean, I wish there would never be a complaint on some city operation, but we aren't that lucky. So if it is a complaint on the city, who does that go to, to resolve that? Like, what, who?
Well, I think what's great is that we are providing avenues for which people can provide feedback, positive or negative. We expect these are going to be, this will be critical feedback, which is really good, because we can respond to that, we can explain ourselves if we need to. But I know that Patty and staff will take, you know, if it's a complaint against the city, they'll take that and give it to the appropriate organization. I would trust that would be the case.
So there's not one particular person within the city that would be responsible for gathering these concerns?
I would just jump in and say that's really entirely up to city management. We would ask them, and if the city manager wants to delegate a port complaint to the port director, then that's who we would send it to. But we would start with the city manager and go from there.
Not to add anything else to play, I'm just asking these questions.
No, Councilmember Bradbury, that's absolutely fine, if it's obvious, or maybe not obvious, that, you know, the origin of the complaint and how to deal with it, it's fine that it come to the city manager's office. If it's something obvious, like, oh, this is a law enforcement concern, then it can go directly to the police. I think just as long as it finds its way to the correct person, that's the main thing.
Perfect. And then last thing is, on these enhancement suggestions or solutions that you may find that work on a small level, will that be shared with whoever's in this position over the ports, to kind of help lead our way in enhancing the city experience in terms, I mean, we've talked about crossing guards and street closure, I mean, there's numerous amounts. Would that information come to us, so that we can always kind of see, you know, what do we need to look at improving on in that area as well, to just make us look a little bit better compared to down the street?
Abby, that's a really good point, because this is data collection, right? And we can take that data and we can use it to make decisions. And if that is decisions or information we can provide to ports and harbors and the city and the city council, this body, we certainly would do that. And that information is going to be transparent anyways. So yes, I would hope that anybody who's a stakeholder in the decision-making processes, both public and private, would use this information to make really great decisions on behalf of the city, on behalf of the community, on behalf of Ketchikan.
When you say transparent, would that mean that it would be posted to the website too, considering that then the community can also take a look at it?
I'm going to defer to Patty how that exactly looks like as far as the architecture, but yes.
Yeah, we really base this program on how Juno has their setup, and you could go to their site and see their spreadsheets year in, year out, and see what the comments were and resolution.
Off the top of your head, what's their site?
Juno-- If you just typed in "Juno TBMP,"
T--
TBMP, you would be able to pull it up.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, if I may--
Yes, absolutely.
This is really good, these are really good questions because I'll be adding the answers to these questions to our presentation on March 31st.
So, just, I want to have a little fun here. For example, say I decided I wanted to complain about a ghost tour that was going through town, talking about the many ghosts in various locations of Ketchikan, and one of them happens to be me. And so would I just write in there, "Can you please let the ghost tour people know that I'm very much alive, and I'm not a ghost? But I'm very, would love to just come down and dress up in white," and, yeah.
Well, if you have really great ideas like that, I, you know, I would be open to those suggestions because I like to create new tours all the time, so-- But you're absolutely right. It is, it's, you know, I don't know if you recall the Mythbuster presentation that was coordinated by the KVB and Patty a couple of years ago when things were quote-unquote "normal." And it's really, this is going to be a good avenue for making sure that we can help explain if that is something that needs to be done. If we explain why we represent in a certain way, we can do that. And that's just understanding, you know, what do people perceive a problem? And we can say, "Great, I'm so glad you identified that. Let's talk about solutions." Or, "Great, I'm glad you identified that. We're working on a solution." Or, "That has been a problem. Here's what we've done as a solution," you know? Or, "Maybe we need to look at that again and say, 'Do we amend the TBMP and add new practices?'" Does that answer your--
Yeah, I guess my question would be, too, is how is it-- We're expecting locals to report stuff or as well as people that are visiting because I think one of the main issues would be telling stories that are not true or labeling fauna that inappropriately or wrong because they were given the idea that they had to name it. They couldn't say they didn't know, things like that.
I think it would be interesting to see how we would capture that information. Absolutely, if it is captured by a local, we would hope that those also who sign on are committing to the requirement that you're training your people to provide factual information. And those companies would then audit to provide assurances that those things are actually happening. So we're going to rely on our volunteer, you know, partners, voluntary partners, to comply. And they have to create their own assurances. And if there is a way that we can find out that there's misinformation, then we're certainly going to do that. And I know that Patty and her team already do that as a service to the community and ensuring, again, that we're providing the best experiences, the most accurate experiences here.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I hope we have a successful season. Maybe we can afford some heat next year.
Thank you for your time.
That concludes the presentation. We're going to move on to mayor and council comments. I'm also going to ask if either the acting city manager or acting ports director, if you guys have any comments, feel free. So we'll actually start with you, Lacy.
Your Honor, I don't have any specific comments. This was really helpful information, I think, for the council and for the community for ongoing discussions of a tourism manager. So it's been helpful for me, and I look forward to hearing what the council has to say and how we can continue to refine the process of discussing a tourism manager.
Thank you. Mr. Helsin?
I would second what Lacy said. I would also add that I think the presentations, if we could get copies of those, I think it would really facilitate Daryl Verfie's transition as the new port and harbors director. So that was very helpful. I think it'll be very helpful. Thank you.
I'm glad this presentation happened so that this body knows what the KVB does and what the plans are for the future. I'm very excited that this coming season, we will have a grip of what is going on, and we will also have given the guest a great experience. And I'm hoping through the tourism best management practices, we will make sure our local citizens are taken care of, their complaints are mitigated, and things are set right. So I'm glad this presentation happened.
Thank you. Abby?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you to all the presenters. Always great information. It's always great to share with other non-industry folks what we do every day. I guess when I brought forth the tourism director position, I, in hindsight, I wish I would have gone about it a little different and brought forth my own description versus Juno's description. So I think that did mislead the community, as Patty Mackey had said, on truly what we need as a council, a community, and just our staff. Currently, in my eyes, there are many different people wearing a hat to help support some aspect of the city operations side of tourism. So you have the city manager doing something, you have the assistant manager, you have the port director, the harbor master. They're all working on fee structures and talking with cruise lines to work on improvements, all these backend stuff that not necessarily you see on that side. And it takes a lot of time. For instance, this bus situation. You know, we couldn't hand that off, you know, we used our partners, thank you to Claw and Hat for working on that, but it also took a city person to represent the community and the citizens to figure out what was the best solution, not only for Ward Cove, but what was the best solution for our community in general. And that's one thing that I know I've said at previous meetings. Everyone here listed who they represented, and none of them were actual citizens. They're paid members, cruise lines, all these various people. And so that's what I think our citizens lack, especially the non-industry folks, which we know there's a large part of the population that doesn't have anything to do with, directly with, the industry. And I think it's important that we have somebody that listens to both sides and does what Mark just did on the Ward Cove bus solution, and find that happy medium. And it's hard to say, okay, you know, you guys work for your members and everything and create a plan for the city. It's hard to ask that of an organization that does represent, you know, a private sector or a group of people, not necessarily the whole community, even though we hope that everybody would move towards the best goal for the community, not just their private industry. And I think so, bringing forth this tourism director, it wasn't necessarily to take over positions of the KVB. I mean, they would not be marketing to independent travelers, in my mind. They would be focused on the operations side and upland improvements and kind of taking that weight off of our city management that already has a multimillion-dollar utility company to manage and a city to manage as well as a port. And as we move into a new city manager, that person, we're not going to find anyone like Carl that can manage all three entities and make it all work. So he's going to need key people that understand the industry, that represent the citizens' best interests, to bring forth those ideas and those whatever fee structures, because I'm really set on these fee structures right now. But bring those forward to the city manager and then to the council to help create and establish a uniform for our community. And so, of course, they'd be standing, I would hope they would be standing next to Patty at Sea Trade, you know, supporting her and her marketing efforts to the cruise lines and to independent travelers. I hope they'd stand by, you know, side by side. Same with Rick, you know, helping, whatever we can do with scheduling and so forth. So I just think having, my intention was to have somebody that represented us at the table and our citizens because we just don't represent the industry. And we need the industry, and we need to work together, but we need somebody sitting at this table with wonderful leaders that is that city person. That's not the city manager because they have so much to do. So that was my whole intention of bringing forth this specific position. There's a lot of stuff the city manager does behind scenes that the new person isn't going to be able to do, and we have to realize that. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Lillette?
I'm not particularly convinced that we need a tourism manager myself, just cost-wise at this point. But maybe in the future, when finances get better-- After this year, this is going to be it. I am so excited about the TBMP. I think that's going to be the best thing to happen to the tourism industry in a long time, I think. I think it could be very effective, so I'm excited. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you. Really?
I appreciate everybody coming and giving the presentations. I found it very, very helpful and informative in understanding what you guys do. I think on this issue with the tourism manager position possibly, we got to be real careful with it. Just from Mr. Erickson's presentation, you know, I could see that if we get somebody on board that maybe has a little different outlook, potentially it could cause a lot of problems. So I think we got to kind of put faith in the experts who've been working in this industry in their various ways for many years successfully. Also, I wanted to emphasize again, as I've said before, that as much as we all have valid concerns and things that we are-- yeah, concerns about the tourism industry, I always want to point out that prior to the pandemic, that was kind of out of Ketchikan's hands. I think the tourism industry has been very successful over the years. All our different partners and people, players in the game, are, play a role in that. But I think as hopefully the ships begin to return, we got to kind of let it play out and get back to where we were. So I'm hopeful that happens sooner than later. And echoing what Lillette said on the cost of hiring a new employee, I forget what it was, 120-something or 30-something thousand with benefits. You know, sometimes more government isn't always good, even though the idea, you know, the intent might be good, but, you know, once you get somebody in that position, it could potentially be not so good. So that's all I've got. Thank you, guys, for your presentations.
Thank you. Judy?
Thank you all for your presentations. I do have a lot of thoughts on this whole subject, but I want to take the opportunity to review the presentations again. I took quite a few notes, and I want to make sure that we look at this carefully and thoughtfully. Yes, money is a factor, but I don't think that it's necessarily, you know, the breaking factor. I think we need to look at what's good for the whole community. Was never, I don't think, the intent to, you know, take over KVB. You are an organization that works for your members. And so that never even crossed my mind, anyway. But I think there is a place for someone in tourism. Certainly not doing scheduling, but I think it's important that they understand that so that they can tell the rest of the community why it's done the way it's done. I mean, just as a councilperson, we get so many calls. And so I think that, you know, just having somebody that's our face would be good. What that job looks like, I'm not prepared to, you know, say anything on that until I look at, there was a lot of information presented tonight, and I appreciate all of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Jenely?
Yeah, I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight and freezing our butts off in this building. But the, I think, was great information, and I agree with what Judy said. There's, I think it's nice to have, considering the amount of things we're always working on and the amount of time that has to go into something like this, having somebody that's designated to be our boots-on-the-ground, per se, so that we have somebody that's actually participating in it. This is a full-time job. And all of us at this table, this is not our full-time job, although I do feel like sometimes it is. Most of the time, sorry. The, I think, just listening to this presentation and the past several weeks and several years, one of my, I think, just to drop an idea in the bucket, is that we tend to spend a lot of time discussing everything on the inside of downtown Ketchikan in the middle as it passed the tunnel. And we like to just put everybody right in the center. And I think it's important and something that's been brought to my attention by many, several of the businesses down on the Newtown area is that, when are we going to be thought of? So, you know, there's been a lot of rejuvenation in the, just past the tunnel before you, you know, in the Newtown area, and several new businesses that would really like some thought put into how they would be addressed and marketed. A lot of times, I had a couple people tell me that no one gets off the boardwalk. We, I know that we, before pandemic, we had talked about putting in the flaggers down there at the old bypass. I still think that's an important discussion due to the fact that it's extremely dangerous in that spot with the buses turning into berth four. There's some blind spots with the crosswalk. I've actually watched people crossing, and there's a bus right there. And I know there's people coming, so I stop. And I had a guy lay on his horn because he wanted me to move. Now, if I had moved, who's to say it wouldn't hit those people in the crosswalk? So I think, I know maybe I'm off-topic, maybe I'm not. But Newtown seems to get lost in the shuffle when it comes to some of these conversations. And I think it would be nice that we consider all of our players, including the ones on the other side of the tunnel, and not just in the downtown core and on berth one and two.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who came tonight and presented. It was a lot of really, really good information. It's quite an education to see what all of you folks in the industry do to pull off a season. Ketchikan has a long and storied cruise ship tourism history in a town not made for cruise ship tourism. And one of the things that I've said over these last couple of years, going back to the RFP, none of these concerns or discussions were ever, at least in my perspective, based upon the cruise ships aren't scheduled well or the KVB's not doing a good job. It wasn't a lack of anything. I think the industry, every facet that you folks deal with is well-managed. That being said, two takeaways from the RFP for me was we can no longer afford the status quo, and we can do it ourselves. One of the obligations we have as city council people is we don't have-- One of the obligations we have as city council people is we don't have, I'll say the luxury, we have a larger lens. How does tourism affect the community at large, the greater community? The status quo isn't maintainable. I've just finished my sixth and final budget cycle, and I don't mean this just with tourism, but by and large, what we've been doing as a community is not sustainable. Simply growing bigger and doing the same thing into the future isn't the solution. I think tonight's presentation was really valuable in helping to start to identify the areas with which a tourism manager might be able to be of benefit to the community. That was one of the comments I got from people all throughout the RFP. We don't need an outside entity. We can do it ourselves. That's what the tourism manager idea is, the community doing it themselves. The 8,000 people who actually own the port of Ketchikan, having that person so that people can go to that person with their problems, their concerns, their ideas, and they all have an equal voice. This is a first step. We'll see if it comes to fruition or not. Money is always a concern. How do we budget for another $150,000 position? Well, Mr. Gass, I won't have that, any input into that. I'll leave that up to you. I'll be gone. But again, I just want to really thank you folks for coming out tonight. This was a really good presentation, and I'm really grateful. And with that, if there is no more comments or questions, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, please.
Second. Thank you.[1709.83]